Yes.
That's made of so.
All right.
Yes.
Just to like United States of America, the Republic, which is stands for nation under our.
Evening, everybody. Okay. We need to order.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the agenda for tonight's meeting.
Okay. Any question, your parents? Davis. Don't favor it.
I agree. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes for the October sixteenth meeting.
And expecting the silence on that. And none. Don't David.
Hi.
Hello. Welcome to your first Board of Education update. Thanks.
Good evening. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
It's been a wild first month. It's been amazing. Um.
You're welcome.
Yeah, it's been great. So my goal, honestly, for this entire first month is just to be able to get um out and about around, get to know people, um understand processes and procedures. So um it's been amazing. The the culture, the the staff, the kids, there's so much great energy. Um, and I just feel like it's it's I'm learning something new every second. It's not every minute, it's every second. So it's been great. So um I I was here, I started October second, so it's been um a full month. So um this kind of just outlines a few of the things that um I have been learning about um working on all the way from kindergarten students all the way up through working with the um middle school and high school teams, um the community and the glow region and just trying to better understand um, you know, of course, first and foremost, what keeps us safe. Um but also, um what does it teachers need? What do the kids need? And how can we best support that as a collaborative collaborative community here in Geneseo? Um, so moving forward, uh I look forward to continuing um supporting all the wellness and listening, revising, making little tweaks here and there for the, you know, um as any good practitioner would do, once you start out a brand new school year, you kind of take a step back and say, all right, what's working well? And what could we maybe make a little change with? And that's what we're doing right now. And um I've been gathering that feedback from informal meetings, formal meetings with teams, as well as surveys um and talking to the kids. So one of my most memorable moments was today, we made a little switch and a little change with the um kids in the Go Blue. They love Go Blue tickets and celebrating and highlighting their positive character traits. And um our office became really, really busy, right? Because they had so many Go Blue tickets and it it just, it was always moving. So he said, what can we do that would help me to get to know the kids a little bit more? It's I've even exercised and movement and the power of that. So we did playground um with the principal. So we, every classroom chose one Go Blue ticket. And we started off the morning forty degrees this morning, put our jackets on, went outside. I was running around in my heels, playing tag. It was fabulous. So um so it was great. So uh, you know, again, continuing practices that the kids love, the teachers enjoy, but making little tweaks to make it our own too. So um as we continue through the next couple of months, we have our assessments that are underway that will help support parent conferences and report cards of communicating student progress. Um, working with our administration team on PLCs, um as well as MTSS and IST procedures. Um defining clarity and continuity between elementary and the little school and high school around behavior. Um, and then supporting community traditions. We're excited to have our Veterans Day. Community tr- tradition coming on Thursday. We have some great things coming up for the holidays. So it's been great. So this gives you a little glimpse into what's been going on. Um we continue to support the relationship between SUNY Geneseo and Geneseo here um with our field visits. We have basketball players, you know, the kids that are six, five, six, eight, that are coming in with little ones. They love that um and volunteering. And we've had some great field trips. Um Officer Happer has been getting out and around. Um, we celebrated Day of the Dead where we had, it was a Mexican Mexican tradition that third grade families came in. It was amazing. And last week, the first um newsletter went out, I just shared, um that was our views from the elementary lens, three hundred eighty-three. Like, that's a good, good start. Um, so and it showcases um a snapshot from each and every grade level and department. So we're just trying to offer a glimpse um into our uh school. And again, this aligns back with um my entry plan that I shared in the interview process of really just um taking time to understand the people, the processes and the procedures here um as we grow together. Any questions at all?
I don't know about you, but it's hard to believe it's been a month. This first month is.
Yeah.
It flew by.
And it'll be like a month or it seemed like longer.
I I feel like month is fair. Yeah, I feel like it's it's a lot of learning. Um, but I feel like even just reflecting on where I was three weeks ago, two weeks ago to now, just a greater understanding. So it's been exciting and great. So thank you.
Well, good morning. Good.
Yeah, we doing the update?
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
And on our behalf of our high school team and middle school, we made a poster and signed it all for you.
That's nice.
Yeah.
Senator.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So well, actually, we're going so far. Our drama club show, The Boss Just Died, Can He Call Back? Performances are gonna be on Friday, November seventeenth, Saturday, November eighteenth at seven thirty P M. And also Sunday, November nineteenth at two P M. And you can get those tickets on the Q R code and that you could easily find on the posters all across. Or visit the school website for those tickets. And also, seven, seven members of our high school Earthwise Club attended the Finger Lakes Youth Climate Summit at the Hobart and Willing Smith College on Wednesday, November first, and they had like a great time there. And their whole purpose of going there was to basically develop a climate action plan for our school and bring that home present. And they're soon gonna come to the board meeting to discuss that thing. And I'm a senior, so we attended this field trip at the Wickham Farms last month, and it was a great time. Like, we just bonded with all of each other and pulled around in the Apple tree farms and all this stuff. And we also visit the elementary school to hang out with some kindergarten students, and we basically did some fun like pumpkin crafts and really created that barn that we used to be all these years. Yeah. And yeah, that's a little update for you guys.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's very competition.
Yeah.
Um presentations.
And so, yeah, so speaking of great things, and we're getting back to Gianna, um we're presenting the eighth grade um Washington trip, hoping we're getting back to that transition. So take it away, Mr. Bucci.
Yes. All right. So for those of you who don't know me, I I miss Bucci. I teach eighth grade social studies and twelfth grade participation in government. Um awesome to see Brittany here tonight. But yeah, so we want to bring back the Washington D C trip for the eighth graders. Um, this trip would be three days, uh well, two days, but you know, technically three. Um it would be May thirteenth through the fifteenth. We have approximately forty-five students going right now um with uh approximately around twenty to thirty chaperones and then six staff chaperones that are all on board. Um, so that would be, again, yeah, that would be um the second week of May, I think, yeah, thirteenth or fifteenth. And the itinerary would be a tour of the monuments and then the Smithsonian museums, Arlington National Cemetery, um the National Zoo. And I think one other thing, it's a really packed trip. Um Pentagon City Mall. Oh, and that Pentagon Memorial. So it's it's busy, but that's good because we want we want students to be busy or take them around D C. Um, and I think it's just super important to kind of, um you know, experience that firsthand. Many of the kids have never been to D C before. Um, you know, what a great time to go and and see all that history, right? Um, you know, in in our nation's capital. So I really feel that that's super important. Um, but I am coming to you for approval. That is my mission. Yeah, any questions or?
Yeah, it's great to see it coming back. Great to see it restarted. You missed it.
Can I just say a few things? Uh I really applaud the eighth grade team. We have four new members, really your second year to tackle this initiative. I was hesitant to throw it out there. They have one veteran on the whole team and the enthusiasm. And the wanting what's best for our students was just amazing. So it is a big ask. It's a big challenge. They're up for it. It's a great team. So really kudos to all of you to have the courage to take on something this big.
Okay. Other questions? Okay, wait till then.
No, it's right now.
Oh, great. Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that on the recommendation superintendent, we approve the eighth grade trip to Washington May thirteenth to fifteenth.
Okay. Any further questions, comments, thoughts? In that case, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? You're on your way.
Have fun.
So much.
The prognosis of for three through eight New York State assessments.
We're unpacking this today. It's a trio of all of us here this evening. Thanks for having us here. We're gonna talk a little bit about the three through eight state assessment results that did. Mike, you got more?
Yes, I'll be right there.
The data that was released here uh over the last couple of weeks, um each year the state will present embargo data and then it uh comes out more publicly and then it's placed into an online portal that uh you could spend days and days getting lost in, which is exactly what I did. Um in trying to pull reports that were gonna help us in moving forward. So there's a lot of different ways that we could look at this data. What I tried to do here is put it into a comprehensive manner, talk about why we chose these data points and then next steps is what our team will talk about around here. Uh, this is a slide that we utilized last year uh when uh Stephanie Miller was here and her and I were up here presenting uh in a similar topic, thinking about how the four components of instruction come together. So so much goes into the work that we do in teaching our students. And most of these things happen on the backend. Uh the instruction is the actual doing of the task, but we have to look at what are we working from in the standards, the curriculum design, and then how are we gonna assess to ensure that the instruction, the actual teaching is something that's effective? When we think about these uh four different pieces of the pie, the standards are where are we going? The curriculum is what we're teaching. The instruction is how we're teaching it. And then the assessment is, well, here's where we are now. Where do we go next? This past year was the first year of the new three through eight state test based on the next generation learning standards. That's an important piece of uh information to share because our results will showcase exactly what this will tell us. So right here is the first opportunity our students had to access an assessment where the rigor was increased. Now, it wasn't just Geneseo, it was across the board. Uh, the type of texts and types of questions that were asked uh were brand new for kiddos. Um and 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 our results are showing that some work has to be done. So we'll unpack some of those here today. Our three through eight performance, uh what you'll see here are four different colors. Uh, a level one, two is not performing at mastery, level three and four is performing at mastery or above. And then what we've done is put our third through eighth grade uh into a bar graph for you to to see where each of our grade levels did fall in uh the specific E L A aspects of the exam. So anything in yellow or blue would be underperforming. Anything in pink or green would be overperforming or meeting that expectation. What we were able to do with this data is unpack each of the specific domains and then standards where uh we could see specifically where our students were not meeting uh the regional or the B O C's level of mastery and then where our students were overperforming. So that's data that we've collected here and are going through with our teams to say these are areas of our curriculum that we need to beef up to make sure that our students are performing at a much higher level. We then wanted to pull the historical data, but that's important as well. So what you'll see here is from two thousand seventeen to this past year, our levels of threes and fours, so where our students were performing at mastery. And outside of a couple outliers, we're pretty static in terms of students that were performing at that three and four. Now, some may look at this and say, wow, we only have this many. Some may look at this data and say, why are we not going up? Some will say, why are we not going down? Those are questions that we asked ourselves to say, how do we make it so that these numbers are slowly increasing each and every year? And it's not necessarily the greens all the time. It's that that level of blue. How do we get our kiddos that are twos to become threes to reach that mastery? Not to say that we wouldn't want to push some of the blues to greens as well, um but really looking at each data point to say, what what was the outlier here? You'll notice that um the number in two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two was when uh we had a lot of opt-outs as well. Which is an interesting point. We could really dig deep about the number of students who took the test that year.
The blue and the green as well.
Uh our level threes and fours.
Similar to the previous slide. Okay.
Yep. Going forward, this is our performance summary for uh our math assessment from third grade through eighth grade. Again, the colors represent our level ones and twos are yellows and blues. And then our purples and greens are our threes and fours. So uh mastery and above. And then looking historically at our sixth grade levels. Something that we noticed here is a general decline in our numbers of threes and fours. This is why we started looking specifically at our math curriculum this past summer and how we can do a redesign specifically in math and targeting these next generation standards. Our E L A standards haven't changed enormously. Uh it's more of the uh type of text and the the rigor of the text. For math, there has been a uh several additions that have really uh forced our students to dig deeper. And our curriculum that we were working from was not providing opportunities for students to have those rich discussions, conversations, and scaffolded skill work to support uh the increase in rigor in the assessment. I then threw on here the fourth and eighth grade. Last year, there was not a fourth grade science assessment given. They are starting with the fifth grade assessment this year. Eighth grade did have an assessment this past year. So this year, uh in the twenty-four, twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four, all fifth graders and eighth graders will be taking the new uh science assessment with the next gen standards. This ladder of inference is another slide that we had up last year because it's important to think about what the data is telling us. Last time when I was up here talking about curriculum design and assessment, uh talked around something very similar. We can look at data in a lot of different ways, and we could look at it and feel really bad about what we're currently doing, or we can say this data is telling us something, that our kids need something different. I wanted to start with that slide saying that it was the first year for the next gen E L A in math. The work that we should have been doing with curriculum should have happened several years ago to prepare our students for this. What this data is telling us is we need to do a lot more work on that curriculum to ensure that our students are not reaching another assessment and not feeling prepared. There's a lot of other things on the backend that also need to be worked on, and that's what we'll talk around here in just a few minutes. We're gonna unpack three of the components here today. First one being curriculum, and I'll talk on that one just because it's work that we've been doing. Last year, we started a pilot in our foundational literacy, uh looking specifically at how we can support our kids in decoding a text, phonemic awareness and phonological phonology. And it was a smaller pilot program that is now a pre-K through two um resource that supports our phonics uh curriculum in not just tier one instruction, but also tier two instruction. So they're getting intervention in this area as well. And we have students up through fifth, sixth grade who are receiving intervention in the area of phonics. We recognize that many of the skills where students were falling below that level three and other districts were not is decoding. So they were unable to work through a text at their level, unpack it to understand it. So uh that's an area that we've really tried to add a lot of resources to make sure that our students are feeling more successful. Our math curriculum guides, I talked around that at our last session, as well as a little bit today, really looking at the individual skills that our students need to master to understand that standard. A lot of our math interventionists are currently working at uh at this level as well. They're having very targeted, skill-specific activities for kids to be showing mastery on. And then our overall socio-emotional learning benchmarks, this is an important piece because it's our grit, making sure that our kids are not giving up as they work through really rigorous tests.
So instructionally, um some of the things that have been implemented to start up this school year um or redesigned, um refined, is win time. Um, it's what I need time. So really looking at the students individually and grouping them based on the needs. Um, if it's into coding, making sure that we're teaching to what they need and not just giving them something that they would not really tune into. Um, we have uh integrated co-taught classrooms where there's a general education teacher, a special education teacher. Um, being able to, again, help facilitate more smaller group instruction, working at the levels of what kids need. And the A I S um tiered instruction, again, creating that time so that within the schedule um tier two support can be offered to students. So that that like more, again, individualized support above and beyond the tier one that's for everybody. Um, and the providers are able to push into the classroom um and pull out if needed. And then our team meetings, um we have scheduled once a, once a week uh where we are meeting horizontally at a grade level, but we're also meeting vertically. We've added those in um and then incorporating special areas so that we can have those important conversations around individual students um to support their overall instruction throughout the school day.
And then our last piece here is looking at some of the assessments that we're giving. Mike, you can talk a little bit on this and how your teachers are trying to provide some of that uh very direct, specific, targeted intervention work based on those assessment pieces.
Yeah, we look at assessment a little bit different in middle school, high school. And uh as you know, you're gonna hear in a few weeks, when I present regions data, I look at rankings because there's a new test this year, you know, or last year, and we all know through many years of experience, that sometimes a state does have an assessment that's not really reflective of student performance. Uh when Common Core first came out, they talked about, well, these are the students in danger of not meeting graduation requirements. And so for me, I I look at the data and say, okay, where are we region? How are we performing? Never mind the test, because from a sixth grade year to an eighth grade year, that test could be completely different. But how are we comparing to districts in our region? And for me, that tells a big story. We also look at how are we comparing? So if I have grade eight students, how are they doing on science, maths and E O A? Like, if you look at our science results, you say, wow, what happened there? But what you don't know is that the majority or high percentage of our students are taking what? Accelerated science. So they're not even part of that data. So that data was in there. You would see a skyrocket. So for me, like this year in math, both seventh and eighth, very powerful, because we're right at the top of how students in those grade levels perform. So I look at data a little bit different. Now, what happens is when we look at that, we say, okay, where are we underperforming? Where have we traditionally been? What areas do we need to grow in? And it could be one skill set. It could be multiple choices. One of the things we looked at. When I looked at the data, I said, okay, that could be an area we need to improve on. So what I rely on, especially with with the veteran staff we have, is okay, as a team leader, so Allison will pick on you since you're sitting, you're sitting here and you're our math department team leader. If we noticed at a particular grade level that our ranking in the region is really, really low, we would meet and we'd say, okay, let's work with that teacher and see where are we lacking? Where in our growth? And this happens for regions as well. Is there a skill set? As students seem to struggle with a little bit more. And we identify that and say, okay, where can we strengthen that concept? Where can we teach that concept? So for me, looking at that data, see the big picture. Where where really are we at? Because, I don't know, I've never seen, we've never had a graduation rate of forty percent, right? We're always ninety, high nineties. So what the original part of Common Core, that students were in danger of not meeting graduation requirements, I'm not sure if that's really what came out of this. And especially with the opt-outs, that's a struggle. Because when you think, when students opt out, are they just struggling? Students always know. That's a misconception, because some of your really strong students opt out. And so you don't get that real data. For me, that's important. So I don't want to overanalyze that and say, well, we're we're missing something here. But overall, when you look at the big picture, where are we performing? And where you'll really see gaps is when they get to high school. Right? Because we can't, and for me, the mastery rate's important. How many level fours do we have? Because that tells me, oh, you're correcting where it is where it needs to be in level rigor, because some students are meeting that standard. Where do we have? Maybe we have to differentiate a little bit more of somebody in betweeners. How do we get them to the next level? So we look at the data, and right now, for example, we had a new E L A teacher last year in eighth grade, right? So we look at that and say, okay, how can we support someone that's been there many years before her? You can't expect the same results, but how do we make sure our curriculum and everything's in place to support this teacher? And I have tremendous faith that our teachers get there. And that's why we continually rank at the top within our region, because that's where I really compared that data. A I S is gonna be important, looking at that. What are we doing for those students at the in-betweeners and saying, hey, how can we get them to the next level? What extra support? We have after-school time right now. We can get students in there, really look at that and say, how do we support you at that time? I think that can make a big difference. So for us, we analyze the data more in the department because they need to know what skills are lacking. Uh, they're the the subject masters is what I call them, right? You need to know your content more than anyone, and I have faith that they do that. Questions?
Well, I'm looking for the kind of the underlying question. I'm hoping the board help. To get to that, though, when you look at the data from was it two thousand seventeen to twenty-three? Can we track? Maybe you're not ready for that yet. Maybe you haven't gone through the data enough, but can you track year to year? Last year to this year, is there progress between a particular grade level? Not the overall data, but the grade level tracking from the individual group, but the the grade four, how do they do in grade five?
Yeah.
Now, that's the kind of looking at data of kind of.
Yes, that 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 was a question I was gonna ask. It's like, you know, say, the class of twenty twenty-eight. How did they do, you know, like? Is there, is there a trend where they have, where they started to where they are now? I I still appreciate the data that you have because I think it's it's good to recognize the overarching theme, you know, how all students do in a certain grade, but it would be nice to see. Is there growth?
Yeah, and and some of these pieces will show um.
Yeah, I know. In inheriting that data is.
Twenty-one, twenty-two. This is the same cohort.
But visually.
Yeah, I see what you're saying. Yeah.
You know, like tracks, like, you know, certain classes, like all sequentially, that would be just visually nice to see.
And Matt, that is a good thing to look at. We look at the cohort, but sometimes maybe the eighth grade test that year wasn't good. So that's where I I look at multiple data pieces, say, okay, regionally, where are we at?
Yeah.
And and that's, that's a great question, because it is important to track the cohort.
I think the most important piece out of, out of all of this is the data-informed decision-making. I I look at our curriculum and how we're beginning to shift uh to a local localized curriculum that oftentimes will be already taking place in a region's course, right? We we have to focus more on the knowledge before the resource. And and that shift is something that our our teachers are working so hard to to try to mold it all together. Um, and and they're doing a a fabulous job, but we have to have those opportunities to keep having conversations around data. We need to have conversations around data that aren't just looking at numbers and feeling bad about it, right? Because when I looked at that, I was like, I was in third grade. Because when I looked at that, I was like, I was the third grade principal last year, like that's crummy. But it's not about that, right? It's a new test, new standards. And what can we do now to begin to look at that third grade cohort and say, okay, there's a shift? And now the fourth grade, they're increasing a little bit more. And we have to have that optimistic perspective where we're making change based on informed decisions. We're looking at our RTI practices and at elementary, completely restructure them so that we have goal-driven interventions, multiple levels with different resources supporting those interventions. And the goal is to get kids out of intervention. I've talked about that before. So often kids just kind of sit and float because it fits nicely into a schedule. No, we want to have these kids feel confident, successful, and they master this goal, they're out. They may come back in when they reach a new standard that they're working on in the classroom. But we want to build their confidence and hopefully through more of these conversations, more refined curriculum where we're assessing routinely, skill-driven assessments, not some assessments that were written for us. We can feel more confident making those decisions.
Twelve years ago, we heard a lot about learning loss. And are we able to determine if we're closing that gap?
Not yet. I don't think we're able to yet because not with these assessments. Because these assessments came out after were designed as that learning loss period was happening. So it'll be, I think, when we hit more of this primary cohort, first grade, second grade, to see them go through that schooling once again. So we had the kindergarten year, a normal kindergarten year, or we're building in some of these foundational pieces, interventions and a system that support. I think that's when we're going to start to see, okay, we're back on track.
Mike, that's a great question because that's where that comparable data falls in. Because if our students had interrupted education, so did all the students in our area. So that's why I always look at that and say, okay, where are we at compared to those other schools?
Yeah, comparing that to regional data would be helpful.
Is that data just strictly based on the state tests?
Yes, so this is solely that two-day test that they took. And there's other pieces here that the data is not telling us, right? I talked last time about kids' ability to take an assessment on a computer. Are we practicing that enough? Are we practicing how to manipulate numbers on a computer or are we typically having kids solve problems on paper? How are they then transferring answers where they're drafting a short response or an extended response on paper onto a computer? How are we making them feel as though this is something that's important and not just something I just got to get through? It is, it will be. And I know Genesee over the history there, they've were one of the, one of the first years.
A little thought process. And we really didn't see that big of a performance gap when we made that shift. We did some practice assessments.
At the middle, middle, middle school level?
Yeah, yeah.
So an important piece of that practice.
We anticipated a big decline, quite honestly, and we didn't see that. So eventually it's coming. I think in a year or two, actually, is what I've heard, but. So for us to be ahead of it, we thought that would be good. And fortunately, we didn't see that big significant decline, which we anticipated.
So I've always wondered if, if is there data that you guys receive about the state test about what questions students got? Yeah.
Yeah, so we can, I don't even know how many reports I can pull, but you know, how many years back or what I'm comparing it to. I've tried them all. What I have here is specific standards in the bars are success and strength of question. And then this is comparison to the region. So if it's behind one way, it's we're behind, if we're above, right? And this is every standard. And then it's all logged and we're going through, looking at what like third grade. We're reading for information two, three and five are areas that we continuously are not successful in. So what are we doing in our curriculum to beef that up? These are really intense data conversations that take time to unpack, but it's worth it, right? Because then we don't feel that way the next year. And, and we should continuously be looking at that curriculum review cycle. Why, last time I said it's like a five-year plan. We should be saying, we built our math curriculum this year. Our data is telling us this, so we need to revise these three units to beef them up or provide more intervention for these kids to make sure that they've grown a little bit in that area. So we can do it per kid, we can do it per standard, per question, per year.
Do the, do the elementary teachers have, I don't know if there are math specialists anymore, but like, what's their experience of the changes?
With the specific interventionist or understanding the new standards?
How are they gauging the kids and their in-class experience because they're sort of having to process all of this? How does that align with the data that you're?
So it's been, there've been some really good conversations. Historically, our teachers have been working from some canned curriculum resources. And it doesn't always play nicely with a state assessment. It doesn't always play nicely with anything other than the assessment that they wrote. So in unpacking the next-gen math standards this summer with elementary teachers, they knew a lot. But what they had to do was build all of those little pieces that would help a kid feel successful. And they would say, wait a minute, in this resource I was using, it doesn't have these steps. And then the assessment has all of them together and a kid gets a sixty-six out of a hundred. What is that telling us? So we said, let's look at our skills that will lead to that standard. Build an assessment on some skills that we give them after a little bit of time. How are they showing mastery? And then we either reteach because they aren't showing mastery in a different way, or we move forward and the kids who haven't, we give them some intervention. And we are building these small, little mini-units almost versus these large eight, ten-week units where kids have fallen off in the first leg of the race and there's no catching them up then. So it's been a huge mindset shift, but in a really positive way. And they're working for, they want it to end, right? They want to see that end product be complete. So it's reminding them that it's never going to be done. Right? We're going to have a frame and then we're going to look at data and make some adjustments and I think they're, they're ready for it.
So my report has some information. Am I supposed to do this on my own? Do I have this ability? Some celebrations, but it also has some information and just some odd challenges that, that schools continue to have to experience. So a celebration, congratulations again to Mr. Phelps or the recipient of the Al Hock Award. That was awarded the ceremony last Wednesday, November first. So again, congratulations, Mr. Phelps. And another celebration, our parking lot out back looks great. We have it. That's just binder. It's not the top coat. That was a planned move for value engineering. We have it striped. The bad news is it is still a construction site. So we cannot park out there until the construction project is over, which for many of our families, you know, I know they want to access the back of the building and enter into the gym that way. There's a couple of regions, A, it is still a construction site, but also entering the building is challenging at this point because there's, that entrance is not completed. So it will be closed until the construction project is over. And Gary and Brock, did you want to kind of jump in here and just give an update on where the current project is?
Sure, I was going to keep that picture up too. Thank you.
I will.
Couple of things. One, I'll start with the site. So as Cindy just said, so the paving, the binder was down, striped, all that. We're close. Finished lines there and we're just about stepping over it, right? So that, but the landscaping around here is going to be in this, it's going to have to be in the spring. It's November. So to get the best bank for a buck, we'll wait till spring. The contractor will come back and do the grading, find grading seating. But that space will be available when it gets turned over to the district. So stepping into the gymnasium itself, the floor is done. Line stripping, the coating is down. Bad news is it takes three weeks for it to cure. So it's kind of set us back a little bit. The bleachers are available in Rochester, but we have to wait for that seal. We were one, one week into that three-week period, so we have about two more weeks to go. And then we can jump in there and put in the bleachers and finish up that space that close to done. And essentially the ceilings are in the corridors, the flooring is all installed. We're going to get bleachers in and put the flooring down outside in the corridors. And then the, the music suite, so the instrument is next week. There's going to be, right, later next week, there's going to be a ribbon cutting ceremony for it. Vocal's done. I think you're using it at this point. And the bathrooms are done. You're using those. So we're almost there. I, but I, I was, I'm sorry to say it, but I think it's going to be the end of next month by the time we get the gym turned over to, to around Christmas break.
I just, Jim and the addition, that's the, I have another celebration.
So it's the steam downstairs and that's the gym. So we wanted to be the end of this month, but it looks like it's going to be more like. Sorry. You can see the finished line. I've been serious, really.
So in, in line with where it was promised.
Any questions? Thank you, thank you.
And that is the large gym. That, that's a finished floor. That's kids safely enjoying our space. Just take a moment because that, that's been something that lots of, lots of people have been waiting for, students, staff, parents.
I think you aged a couple of years on that.
At least, at least. I agree with that statement. Yes. But now the, the crime is when you walk in there and you see that beautiful floor and you think in our next project. Then I, then I start to cry because it is absolutely beautiful and they did a great job. So very excited for you to see that at one of our competitions or just step in and check out the gym floor. It is, it is beautiful. So that leads us to the conversation about our future capital improvement project, our draft schedule. So tonight you will approve the seeker. Still looking and we'll have that discussion at the end of the meeting of our discussion. The earliest we could have a project vote, we should keep them on Tuesdays. That's when community members are most used to voting on projects. Voting on a Tuesday. When we look at our legal notices, that would be January thirtieth would be the, the earliest that we'd be able to have that. So we could have that in, on January thirtieth or very early in, in February. Again, that puts us in a February to October design phase. We would then have that submitted to the state education department, October twenty-fourth through April twenty-fifth, depending on how long their review cycle is. And then we'd have our bids out somewhere between April and May and construction would start in June of twenty twenty-five. So again, working with fiscal advisors, working with bond council to make sure that we're hitting all these legal notices, but also making sure that we have time for construction and design. So you know, just want to keep bringing this up and reminding us of those, the dates that we need to keep in mind and, and we're hitting for timelines. Any question about the future capital improvement project?
So tonight is seeker and the only question that you're asking us is, is January thirtieth okay?
If that's the earliest we could vote, and we could, we could say January thirtieth in the discussion and we could make the resolution and.
Yeah.
Okay.
We can wait.
Okay. And there was a question about hiring process and just how we go through that process. So once applications are received, they are reviewed and then sorted on who will be asked for an interview and who will not. If he was like, he couldn't leave, he couldn't go. I apologize. You probably don't want to stay for the whole process. And you're more than welcome to. For any applicant who is not interviewed but applied, they are sent an email thanking them for their application and letting them know that they are not being moved on. Anybody who is interviewed receives a call from the administrator in charge of that process. Once the interviews take place, the top two candidates are selected, references are checked, and the candidates move on to the secondary view process, which is usually myself and the supervisor of whatever part of the district that is. We also have to, we're required by New York State Education Department to do fingerprint clearance. But here at Genesee, we also do another level of background checking. What some neighboring school districts have found, we haven't found this yet, knock on wood. But other districts had found that if there had been a crime committed in another state that sometimes wasn't picked up in the New York State fingerprint clearance. So we do an extra level of corporate screening. It's corporate screening investigative group. It's a BOSI service, it's a, run it through a BOSI service out of Erie, BOSI's. And that does an additional background check, does a much deeper dive, goes into all the different states and checks out their background. That way we know their LSS name variances and are shown on this check. So that's how we, we know that piece. Once those pieces have cleared and we, and we don't move forward with a board approval until those pieces are all checked, then the applicant is added to the agenda and the board approved. So just really wanted to make sure that we knew that process. And, and you know, it's, it's something that we probably should review on an annual basis anyways as, as a board, just so you know what the district's processes might as to hiring, especially now that we're hiring as many positions as we are. I wish we weren't hiring as many positions as we are. And along those lines, we still have the business administrator position is open and we still have the Spanish teacher. And so the Spanish teacher will, that position will remain posted until we find a candidate. And we will be reposting the business administrator position. And then some challenges you just wouldn't think you'd be dealing with as, as a school. There's a national shortage of the half-pint milk cartons. And so our goal is to make sure that milk will be provided to our students on a daily basis. What is a challenge is our students in kindergarten through fifth grade, their breakfast is served in the classrooms. And so what happens is every, every morning they are handed a, a large insulated bag for, for their breakfast. So typically you pull out the milk, you pull out the cereal, they can add their milk right to the little cereal container. Well, with this shortage, we're going to be pouring milk into cups during lunch. And I don't know about you and your dinnertime routines, but on a regular basis, a glass of milk is spilled. So I'm, I'm a little apprehensive on how this is all going to take place in an elementary. Middle school and high school, but we do feel it's important for milk to be served daily. So we are going to do our best to, to pour milk in the glasses and have that. But it is, it's, we haven't made any final decisions, but it's unlikely that we will serve milk in the, in the classrooms. We'll definitely have it for lunch, but probably unlikely in the classrooms. And you know, November first started free and free lunches and breakfast for all students. As I mentioned in the weekly update, it was, it's a, we're very grateful that the percentage that was reduced that would qualify us. So I believe all schools in the Genesee Valley region have now qualified. But we certainly do. And so we'll be offering free breakfast and lunch to, to all. And they really don't have a projection on when this will be resolved. They're saying early twenty twenty-four. Now, I just have to let you know. The PTSA about six years ago started the trunk or treat. And when they did, a bunch of staff members got together and decorated their cars and I thought it was great. This year, there was this school bus that was decorated and, and that student was, if you looked over the shoulder of Roxanne, you see that spider web? Well, that, that kind of provided a barrier. And they said, hey, come check out the back of the bus. And when you did, the young man on the right would jump out and go boom. And I did the, he got me, scared me to death. But there were fire trucks. There were family businesses there. There were still our staff with their cars decorated. That bus loop was packed with people who had showed up to decorate their vehicles for trunk or treat. It was that, that odd weather. It was, I think it was seventy degrees. So it was a beautiful evening. It was just amazing. And I, I know everyone enjoyed it, but just so thankful that our staff joined in in the fun and decorated a bus. If you went through that bus, it wasn't something they did overnight. They spent a lot of time decorating. So it's just one of the fun things that, that happens here at school. And I just really wanted to, to highlight that we're, we're still having fun. Some upcoming events, as Ms. New mentioned, they'll have their Veterans Day ceremony on Thursday because Veterans Day is Friday and there's no school. Hard to believe, but JV varsity winter sports begin November thirteenth. Our senior high band all-state festival is November seventeenth and eighteenth. And then as you heard, the boss has died. Can he call you back? Fall play is November seventeenth, eighteenth and nineteenth. So hopefully we'll see you there. Any questions?
I love the title.
I know.
Can he call you back?
It makes you very excited to see the play. That's right.
So you had a question about the the capital improvement project process? So when you talk about the design base, February through October, does that mean? does that mean like hammering out the final true design, is that what that means or?
It's pretty close, um, because what has to go into those plans, because you have then submit those plans to NICE, so it's, you have to be pretty close, there's some small changes that you can make, but that's where the staff, so the architects will come here and what they did last time was they planned a day and we just um broke out times during the day where staff user groups could come in and, and talk about what what was originally planned and what meets their needs.
And what will be used for costing.
But, you know, just so the community is aware that you know, when, when we do put out the capital improvement project for a vote, it's pretty, it's pretty close design wise, but it's in general scope is more important than, you know, the, the diagrams that they're seeing.
Correct, because think about when we went through our current capital improvement project.
There's a lot of things.
And unfortunately, our bids were so high and we had to, we had to cut a significant amount out of our project and even then, um you know, again, the, the outside metal plant panels that are on the gym, they are completely different than what was originally designed. Um, there's a lot less glass in, in that gymnasium, um just trying to think of some other value engineering, we know that significant portions of the cafeteria, the foyer, um that catwalk was removed.
Yeah.
So yes, at times we're forced to make decisions even after that vote.
Sure. Yeah.
And, you know, one of the things that we're hearing very clearly throughout this process is keep the community and stakeholders aware of what is happening with the process, so as we're having these stakeholder, the, as, as the faculty and staff are coming in and providing this information, um, including that somewhere on that capital project website about the updates, the changes, and I, I think that's, there's, I'm definitely hearing the need, the community wants to be involved.
Break some communication. Any other? Thank you.
Hello. So dear board members, administrators and individuals from the community, I have the privilege of serving as your elementary librarian. It is my role within the school to connect our children with those resources that will empower them to be lifelong learners. You have a strong library, one in which you can take great pride. The library contains a solid collection of materials that is constantly able to meet the needs of students and staff due to ongoing development. The library has space for members of the school community to gather in both small and large groups to share books, work with teachers, listen to presenters and learn together. The library also has the only computer lab in the elementary building. The lab provides an opportunity for me to teach students how to use a device more powerful than a Chromebook and become familiar with software such as Microsoft. The plan to cut the library drastically in size will cause significant harm to resource access and community engagement. No matter what funds are directed to new shelving and alternate technology, materials will need to be eliminated. This includes books that students love and computers that help them to develop their digital fluency. The library will become a place for a single class. This will likely mean just carpet space for a story rug and one or two tables. Gone will be our multi-curricular space where so many people are simultaneously learning on any given day. The two minutes allotted to speak is not sufficient time to explain what will be lost in the cutting of the library. I cannot explain the strengths of our book collection, nor the sections of the collection that should ideally be expanded to meet the needs of our population. Two minutes is also not sufficient time for me to explain the numerous ways in which the space is utilized throughout the year. The elementary building needs a multipurpose space at its heart for people to gather. In fact, I have deliberately kept shelving closer than articulated standards just so that there would be more flexibility for activities and groups in the center of the room. We are currently in violation of the Americans with Disabilities Act due to our lack of space between shelves, around tables and throughout the library. This also goes against the standards of the American Library Association, which follows the recommendations of the Americans with Disabilities Act. I have allowed this violation to occur because I see the severe lack of space in our building. Teachers need the library as a quiet place in which to assess students and pull small groups. If anyone wants to know what will be lost, ask me. I have served in this space since the current twelfth grade students were in kindergarten. There have been changes over the years that have impacted the library in challenging ways. But this proposal would have nothing but negative impact on our students. Literacy requires space, just like athletics and the arts. Incoming students will not have the same access to books, a community gathering place focused on literacy and access to a computer lab in proximity to their classrooms. Please don't reduce your library to a specific size simply because it looks like a convenient shape on paper. Please do a needs assessment first before changes are voted on and become permanent. Please prioritize literacy in the Genesee Central School District and keep our kindergarten through fifth grade programming as strong as it has been in the past. Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth.
And I have three little pictures, a couple of events that go on and then there's one for each of you that just have a couple more little bits.
Thank you. Thank you again.
I think we take one of those.
Yeah, it's just these are the charities you want to.
Okay.
Craig, any update, good, missing right?
Yes. Yeah, their audit committee meeting was at six, um, we had in the, uh, the auditor, um the lead person from the, the auditors, Tom Zuber from M M D and Co. And Tom basically walked through the, uh, the executive, I think he called it the executive summary of the, you know, kind of the condensed version of the audit, we have the whole thing. We can have that time reading. Basically, the, the takeaway, I think if I get the quote right, is uh they did not identify any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses, meaning a good audit, of course, they have to come up with something, so there are a few little suggestions of things to do. Um, but, but overall, very clean house.
Yeah, read through the documents in our packet, looks pretty clean, good, thank you. Kevin, policy, anything?
Uh, we met on ten twenty three, um, we reviewed ten policies and they're listed out in your agenda for review. And we put the first reading, it's, it's posted there.
I didn't read it, but I didn't see any, any thing of motion. Any else?
Um, they actually have requested a, a meeting, so on November fifteenth, we'll have a G C, yeah, meeting. And specific meeting, um, talking about the hardwood plastic pitch, talk about bringing back another great tradition, um, so we'll see if the best community, um and staff basketball game is, is back on.
To you. To personnel, I'd like to make a motion, we approve item eight point zero two through eight point one one, second?
Any questions on any of the appointment approach, acceptance of resignation, all drivers, escorts, adding students, substitute teacher, teaching age, et cetera. No questions, all in favor?
I, I have.
Anybody opposed?
Okay, uh, under new business, I'd like to make a motion, we approve items nine point zero two through nine point zero nine, second?
Any questions on these? I know there, I, I did talk to Ms. Flowers earlier regarding the, some of the contracts and, um Yes, and, uh, any questions on those?
And just to follow up on the intermunicipal agreements and I, I apologize, I thought I had a, um, a slide in my PowerPoint and, um really, we, so Avon, Levonia and Genesee have really worked hard, um, through the Lakers, um athletic, um, group to provide students opportunities, so depending on the sport and, and the cost, it does determine how we then either charge each other, so for example, ice hockey is one that just has more fees because of the rent fees and, and, and just how it is. So the, the three schools have agreed to split those costs um equally. Um, so there's other sports like Alpine ski where we will only have one or two athletes that would go and join um, the Lakers downhill um ski team. In that situation, they may not charge us anything as per athlete charge, but if there are certain fees that the ski slope charges, they then charge us that per people, um, for that per athlete fee. So what we're really trying to do and I, and I really want to commend both the superintendent at Avon, Dr. Bracotti and, um, Dr. Longville. All three of us really have the same perspective and that is, can we continue to offer students as many opportunities as possible in a cost-effective measure? And so we, we are moving forward with as many of these agreements, so there's currently ice hockey, Alpine ski, lacrosse, um indoor track and, um, wrestling, so those are the, the current sports that we're merging and just constantly looking to to provide our students opportunity, but that's why, um, there wasn't a cost in this, um, intermunicipal agreement. What we're also working on is trying to simplify the process so it makes more sense, um, to everyone and have a five-year intermunicipal agreement than every year have an addendum that would clearly identify the sport, who hires the coach, how is that cost, um, configured and then we would approve that annually. So that would be a much more condensed, easier to read and understand document than having to do an intermunicipal agreement for every single, um, sport.
Every year.
Every year.
Yeah. That's something that you're working on.
Yep, so, um, Harris Beach, um, both Levonia and Avon use Harris Beach as their school attorneys, they drafted in the agreement, I have forwarded to um, Joe Shields at Fernfrenza, he's reviewing it, once he's reviewed it, um, we'll move forward, so for this year, because we're in that process, it might be duplicative that you've approved these agreements, but we'll also approve that five year.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, business office, I'd like to make a motion, we approve items ten point zero two through ten point one two, second?
Yeah, that was, that was catching up on some of the treasury reports, the, the, the months, we've already, you a couple of other items there, revenue status in the, um appropriation as well.
Yes, so I had, I had a question about the ten point one two, um, specifically about the F O C A. Like, is there, is there a timeline when that's due?
The corrective action plan?
Yep.
Yes, so, um, I will need to submit that by October fifteenth and then it just needs to be board approved later at some point. November, November. So much of that month are flying by.
So I just had a question, does it, it seemed vague to me. So will there be more details in the future or?
Yeah, if you would like more details, we can absolutely share the process, um, for the, like the separation of duties, we already have a written process, is, is that specifically, so?
Yeah, yeah, so, I'm, right, so my experience with, with corrective action plans is, you know, there's usually the specific intervention and there's a systemic, there's the timeframe, who's responsible, the monitoring, like all of that stuff, so those are things that you have additionally, it's just in fine details elsewhere. Okay.
And, and really, um, you know, Doug has worked on the separation of duties, um, the one piece about the capital outlay project, because we have that one local piece is, um, adding a component to our budget newsletter, um, and, and Sherry's made note to make sure that information, so we did talk about the capital outlay project and that local portion of the capital outlay project.
Verbally, yeah.
What we didn't do though was say what we were gonna cover.
Right.
So that just needs to be very clearly communicated to, um, our community. Um, and then, you know, there are just regulations on how much we can keep in our lunch fund and so how we monitor and spend that.
Yeah, and so, um, it's a really good segue for my next question was given the, the new, um, federal funding for the lunch fund, is that gonna put us in a similar situation where?
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Well, there'll be more revenue coming in. Emma's gonna spend sixty thousand dollars on the last plan because the state's been after us, she can only have three months worth of balance. When I checked on that plan, we have not purchased the sixty thousand dollars worth of equipment, it was gonna be stoves and different things. So by November fifteenth, we have to send in another plan. And they'll wanna know, you know, why we didn't buy that, that's probably the bidding process and other things. But we'll have to get that plus a little bit more. And as next year, as the revenue comes in, you have to use it on school lunch, so we'll have to see what else is needed. You could also improve the food. You could lower the price, you know, there's several things you could do, I don't know if they need cafeteria furniture. But that type of thing, but we'll be looking at the entire program because there'll be more revenue coming in to that. You know, to that program.
Is there a educational opportunity for that money, like a farm to table type?
Well, yes, if um, what I think about that is what, it's a program that kids get involved in and
Growing food.
Growing the food and that type of thing, yeah, you can do that.
We are in an agricultural community.
Forty times. Good questions.
And then, so there was a couple of things in, in the very light reading of the sixty page document. I noticed there was a couple of things that weren't previously tracked, um, with the law, or with the, um like the net pension liability and retainage. Like there wasn't, like, there was nothing for twenty twenty two, but then it appears in twenty twenty three, and I don't know if you'll be able to answer that question, but.
I need to look into that.
Yeah, if you could give me more, I can look, I can look that up with you.
What does retainage mean? As a budget? Yeah. So that's just a, just food for thought, I, I which thinks that I think it could mean. But I don't know what it means.
There is one report in there where you, um, don't move the cash until a certain time and maybe I'll look at it.
Okay.
Maybe that's what it is, you know, you're putting money aside for retirement and other things and then the bill is paid right at the end of the year, so that maybe, you may be, maybe that's what you're referring to, but if you could point me to the right
Sure.
area, then I can, I can give you a report at next time.
What's that?
If he's referring to an encumbrance.
Yeah, that, that sounds like encumbrances.
Yeah, it, it sounds like income.
But yeah, I mean, the retainage, um, section also didn't have anything for twenty twenty two, it just appeared in twenty twenty three. Know what that meant? I was hoping maybe somebody does.
Give me the page number.
Sure, I think it's around forty one.
Right.
But. Okay.
Any further questions?
No.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm only laughing, you actually know the page number.
You gotta direct me to that.
I didn't write it down.
Thank you, I mean. All in favor? Any opposed? Any opposed? So.
Especially which is the.
The question. The. The question is January thirtieth. That's the first date according to. S E I campus, et cetera, that we could possibly hold it on a Tuesday.
Correct.
Okay, anything else, any other discussion is later, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So is there anybody in any way opposed to or need further information? Um proceeding with a January thirtieth. Public vote.
What is the district calendar like about that? No sports, there's no, nothing.
Sports, we will, sports schedules aren't completed, they might be now. They weren't at that time.
Though I'm not opposed to it, but the question will come up, uh why spend the winter in Florida? Well, um Sherry's already got a lot of people on permanent absentee ballots, they'll still get theirs. And we'll advertise it soon enough that anybody wants an absentee ballot that's in Florida can apply for one. They'll look back on board.
And then, and then we do, no, well, the sports schedules are listed in the. And then we would also um pick an alternate date in case.
Weather.
We have January thirtieth weather, yeah.
Some other unforeseen. Events.
Yeah, let's take a weather. All right, which would be in February.
Yes, correct.
Okay.
Would we do the next Tuesday, which will be February whatever, as the.
February sixth.
February sixth.
The alternate day.
Okay. Uh okay, I'll make a motion that we approve the date for the vote on the capital improvement project for. January thirtieth, twenty twenty four with an alternate of February sixth, twenty twenty four, second?
Any questions, comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, so move, we're off and running.
Here we go. I did not have anything for a second discussion, I don't know if the board had any.
No, I do not.
Too bad. Yes. We uh, I'll make a motion, we turn, second?
All favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.